6th 2021 Planning Commission Text Change Committee Meeting. We are meeting remotely in an online virtual environment and we ask that everyone be patient as we transition between items. If any participants have issues with technology, please send a message to the moderator. Keegan McDonald will be presenting the first or will be moderating the first item and Eric Hodge will be moderating the second text change on our agenda. We have two items on our agenda today. I would ask the commissioners to hold all questions until the conclusion of all presentations and any public comments. As a general rule, please be recognized by the chairperson before speaking. However, if a presentation is on screen and you have a comment, please feel free to unmute yourself and speak directly. We start every meeting with an opportunity for the public to comment on an item not contained on the agenda. Has anyone signed up? Asking, Keegan, has anyone signed up to speak today?
No, I'm not aware of anyone that signed up to speak and also I do not see any attendees at present, but I can let you know if anyone does join.
Great, thank you. Then we'll move to the first item, text change TC 2220 Multiple Module Height Method. This text change amends the UDO to modify the requirements to allow for a new multiple module option as a method to measure height for commercial and mixed use buildings on sloped sites. The text change also clarifies the standard for height measurement of structures within transition zones between commercial and mixed use development and residentially zoned districts. On August 17th, the committee had an overview presentation and discussed and discussion on this text change. On September 21st, we completed our discussion and identified a handful of changes to be made to the text change. Our goal for this meeting is to review those changes and determine whether to vote this out to the full planning commission. I would ask Carter Pettibone for a brief refresher presentation focusing on any changes since our last meeting.
Thank you Chair Miller. You all see it? Yeah, this is back in front of you. You asked for essentially four changes as staff understood it. The first of which was to look at the text that we had proposed kind of separating the building height measurement feet and in stories. We had added a line, and this is the proposed language, that building height and stories must be met for the entire building or module. To clear that up a little bit, we had also added in feet earlier in the section to kind of make that distinction. And responding to that, the green language is kind of how we divvied up the measuring the stories for a tire building or sorry for a multiple module. Hopefully that clarified it. I guess at this time I want to let David speak. We discovered something late, actually today, we probably need to address in terms of the text. So David, I'll let you take that away.
Thank you, Carter. And reviewing this again and also speaking with Carter and speaking with Justin, we thought in the first sentence of A1, we're rethinking. Can you put that back up? I'm sorry. So everybody can see what I'm referring to real quick. And building height in feet, we had proposed to add in feet. I think our thought process now is to leave in feet out. So it would be building height is measured from. And then in the second sentence where we have building height in stories, striking where we have in stories and there's two locations. There's yeah, he's highlighting him. And then there's one more spot in the in the green green language as he referred to him. And the rationale behind that is because, as you may know, a recent text change was brought forward that we still have building height defined in both stories and feet for seven stories or less. And if I get this wrong, Justin, correct me, seven stories or less also has a height in feet. And we didn't want there to be confusion that if you were a a multiple module height measuring method, you didn't also have to meet the height in feet, if that makes sense. So we thought removing reference to in feet and removing reference to in stories would clear that up. And if I didn't confuse you, ask me a question, I'll try to.
It's actually seven stories and above have no height limit feet, but that doesn't change anything that you said.
Do you want me to proceed or did you want to discuss this?
On this item, any comments from any of the other commissioners? Feel free to just speak up since the presentation is on the screen. All right, it sounds like we're good with those changes.
Miller. Is this, I'm looking at the information from board docs and I don't see this screen that's up on the presentation in that file that was provided to us in our backup. Am I the only one that is messed up on that? We've got through?
No, you were correct. You're correct. It was not in that. This was the change that we well, actually, the green language was in the in the the text that we had sent you. We had updated the presentation because we have another change that we have discovered since the post.
So it's so I can find it in the text, building height?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Carter.
Quick clarification, what you'll find in the text is what Carter went over. You won't find removal of in feet or removal of in stories. That's a last minute change. We want you all to weigh in on.
Ten four.
The next revision was a suggestion to revise the graphics to for 1.5.7 to B. And this, I think we're getting kind of hung up because we had shown a single building kind of how you measure the elevation. And then we had three parts kind of showing three modules and one was behind another. So we thought maybe eliminating that third one might eliminate some confusion. And knowing that these are graphics are really just a representation that it might be a little more user friendly. The next one was for section 1.5.783. In this situation where you have two primary streets and you determine the applicable building elevation and average grade, what's in your packet, this is what's in your packet, has an L shaped building. And we realized again that this led to some confusion. I think we also discovered that we're really not showing everything that would be an applicable elevation for B. So our suggestion, and this is introducing it to you right now, was to revise the graphic to show a single building. So that again might clarify it, show the graphic on what elevations, the ones fronting primary streets be the ones to calculate the average grade. So that is a change from what was in your in your packet, in your backup materials. And the final fourth provision, this kind of section that shows different modules, it talks about having different ground floors. There was a question as to, you know, what is, where is the primary street? Where is it measured from? I think we explained it, but we wanted to kind of show it better in the in the graphics. So the primary shape would be this, you know, the elevated or the angled street in the front. And we labeled the street, side street or side yard to kind of give a little more clarity to that graphic. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Could we go back to the B2 graphic? Before that? This one? Yes, because there were several questions about this one. So I see that you removed module three in this picture. I have in my notes, one of the things that we thought would be helpful would was to add. First, let me ask, is this the same item that's in our backup material?
Yes.
Okay. And so here we have the single building height method with a U shaped building and a multiple module height method with just an L building?
Two models of the building, yes.
Two models of the?
It could be two modules of that U shaped building. We thought maybe clarifying or simplifying it might be better to show the illustration of where the building, the optimal elevation would be.
Gotcha. One of the comments from last time was just to clarify that B2 was less than 30 feet back from the primary street. Somewhere in there, so.
We had discussed that, that the 30 feet on a module two be measured from that B2 line. So if there are separate modules, that B2 would still be the applicable elevation. You know, no matter how far back it was from the primary street, if that was a separate module and then any portion of that measured from B2 30 feet back would not be applicable for the for the elevation.
Sorry. Could you clarify that again? Maybe even just repeating the same thing you said.
Sorry, making this clear as mud, aren't I? The 30 foot issue was whether you're you know, if it's a whole building or a module, any portion of that elevation of the module or building is 30 feet back, you would not count towards the average grade. Our goal in showing the different modules here would be that if you broke the building to different modules, that B2 would be that elevation that you would be measuring your average grade from. So I guess we took that 30 foot, I guess, measurement out of this graphic. Because we had showed it in the subsequent graphic that kind of just explains that 30 foot rule.
Okay. Is that clear for the other commissioners? I'm getting some head shakes. Yes, Commissioner Rains?
Thank you. I may be missing some of it, but I'm looking at the previous text change document where they had a kind of a outline of a U shape. Where module two is, the elevation B2 could be hidden behind another module. Is this revised diagram saying that it's taken out? It doesn't matter if there's other legs to the shape, you still take the elevation based off of the B2 regardless of there's anything in front of it to the primary street. Is that? Is that the intent of this graphic?
That would be correct. I think we had, and I can see if I can go back to that original one. This is the should be up. Yeah, okay. We thought eliminating that module three might and the dash line on that module two might eliminate some of the confusion for that. I guess our thought was taking out that third example just to just to show the illustration of the different modules and where that would be. You know, what the applicable elevation and average grade would be from.
I have in my notes that we were going to add a descriptor of, even though this might be more clear in terms of trying to clarify what you were referring to. One open question we had was how to, what's the method for measuring average grade for connected building portions? So in this case, we know sort of what what wall you're referring to, but how do we measure that average grade for the section, for the east section of half of B2?
They would need to calculate the, I guess, the points, the left and right of the B2. As where that, what's the elevation at that section of the of the site?
I think there were some open questions about that last time. Is that about there might be different methods of measuring that when it's connected? And I think one of the goals last time was to help clarify how that would be measured. Did the other? I am not an architect here, so I'm going to, we have plenty of them on the line, so I'm going to defer to some of them on making, if they understand it, I'm good with it.
Probably just don't understand it. I'm sorry.
I don't either.
If I'm looking at the site diagram in the center with module two, primary street is up at the top, if I can read that on the small screen, is that right? So if that elevation green line B2 is what we're supposed to measure, what if that grade changed at that specific line was completely different than the primary street? Grade. So I'm just wondering what what's driving how we how we determine what those elevations are? If it's different than the primary street elevations, B1 and B3? Does my, does my question make sense? I mean, if you're looking at the straight two dimensional elevation from the primary street looking south, your module two could be 30 feet lower than the module one and from the primary street grade where it hits the right away.
To your point, Commissioner Rains, I almost want to drop a topo on this, like as a test run for different situations, just to see how it actually gels out. Because I'm wondering, given a topo like you described, would it behoove an applicant in that case to break up the modules differently for their benefit, but lead to an unintended outcome with how the heights are coming out? Am I making sense?
Yeah, I think one question I had about the about that, like safer module two that we see right there is in calculating average grade, is it as simple as what is the grade at one end of that green line? And what is the grade at the other end of that green line? And you average those two out? Or is it more fine grained where say between those two, it's kind of, it's low over here and then it goes up and you got to kind of? Am I making it too complex? Is it as simple as grade here, grade here, average amount? That's your that's your elevation?
It was, Mr. Dottel, it's the latter of those two. It's the average grade, highest and lowest points along the elevation. So along that entire facade, you would find the highest point and the lowest point. And the average of those is where height and feet and stories will be measured for for that module.
So wait, to clarify, not the elevations at the corners averaged, but the highest and the lowest elevation averaged?
Yes.
Okay.
Highest and lowest, post development finished grade elevation. So since it's finished grade, it's going to be corners usually, but it doesn't have to be.
What if that's part of the, what if the highest or lowest point is probably part of a connected portion of the building? If it appears that way, how would we measure that?
If it's if it's not visible, is that what you're saying? If it's behind another module? It would be the same. If you're using the multiple module method, the developer builder can break those modules up any way they so choose. Even if they're not typical, what you would think of as as visible facades. That's that's the advantage of this. The only limitations to how the modules can be broken up are or you might have to help me what section those are in. As long as they're 20 feet long, right?
Yes, 20 feet or more in length would be the minimum.
Any 20 foot segment can become its own module.
Where is that? Where is that 20 foot? Because that's kind of what, another question I had. What section?
That's in
A4?
A4.
Carter, is that, is this the version of the revised version for today that we're looking at?
I don't think that. Yeah, that didn't change. That text. So.
Yeah, I see that now, but I was a little hesitant to say anything because I thought maybe I was the only one that was confused, but maybe it sounds like there are others that were at least confused. Maybe they've gotten up to speed. But Carter, if you could go back to the previous sort of through the U shaped, the previous U shaped multiple module. In, yeah, yeah, exactly. Those are like nice neat rectangles. I mean, could someone literally take to Commissioner Fox's comment, could someone take 20 feet of module one and strike a line east to west? And then run down module one and run into module two to where it benefits them and strike a random line anywhere? And then, I mean, at what point do you? And maybe it wouldn't matter to sort of Commissioner Rains, Commissioner Fox's point, maybe with the topo, we're we're getting too into the weeds on this, but with the information that I'm looking at reviewing, one, I'm still a little bit confused about how it's measured. And two, I'm wondering is there enough flexibility in there to game the system to make the topo work to their advantage if it's only 20 feet of a building? I mean, it's not very far.
Yeah, it really would be up to the up to the applicant. The minimum would be 20 feet. I guess you could think of townhomes terracing down a street and they could do 20 foot modules. So if they had a 20 foot wide townhome, they could do that. So it would be, they would have the flexibility to divide it how they see fit as long as it's 20 feet. Section.
Okay.
It would be up to them to show the numbers. If they think it works for them, then they would probably do it.
This has been helpful. I think I'm clear on the examples now. I think I was just getting hung up on what B2 really was, where it was being applied. But with these examples, I think I'm comfortable with how how they're showing what needs to be calculated for elevation of the primary street.
Yeah, in my opinion, I don't think it hurts to show those dotted lines that represent the other modules. I think that kind of helps actually, but.
I agree. I like the first. I agree. I like the first diagram better. And I was looking at the initial notes. I think the issue is in the next section four, it shows another U shaped building. Which it looks like it's the same diagram, but this shows that the line that that greater than 30 foot line there. I think that's what was the confusing part is that because they're both U buildings with similar letters, we weren't sure if it was supposed to be the same building, but I think this is a separate diagram. So that was why we were talking about adding to the immediately prior previous diagram, the clarification that that same line on the immediately previous diagram is less than 30 feet. And that the second one is more than 30 feet.
Carter, could we go back to that, to the first one?
Under the previous one, the previous sample?
Yeah, so scrolling up just a little more. That, yeah, this whole, this U is different from the next diagram, which is also a U. Where in this diagram, that eastern wall of module one is the top part is less than 30 feet. And in the second U, it's more than 30 feet. They're trying to show two different things.
They're they're trying to show, this is this is a multiple, in the case of multiple modules, it it's, it does not matter, the 30 foot distance isn't relevant.
It's not relevant?
No, because because these are, these are individual modules. So both B1, so so grade along both B1, B2 and B3 are all relevant. They're three separate calculations. Now, Carter, if you scroll down to the U shaped building for the single height.
But even if B2 were more than 30 feet back?
That's right. It can be its own module if it's more than 30 feet back. What can't happen is this, if someone's using the single height method, that facade which is more than 30 feet back does not count. If that facade, if that U, if the if the if the depth of the U were less than 30 feet, then the grade along that facade would be taken into the calculation of B, if that makes sense, in a single in a single module calculation.
Ah, that was my misunderstanding about how this worked then. So in the first multiple module height method, B2 could be more than 30 feet back from the primary street and still be subject to this height method.
It could still be its own module, yes. What it can't be is an applicable facade for a single building height.
But but the text at the very beginning of item four, if you scroll to see item four right above there, it says right there, applicable building or module elevations are those which are most parallel or close proximity street. Any portion applicable building or module elevation that is located more than 30 feet behind the portion of the wall. So that seems to say to me that if it is a module versus a single building, we're calling out 30 feet beyond 30 feet is not is not applicable.
But the 30 feet is taken from the wall, the front wall of the module. If that makes sense. The wall plane closest, the wall plane closest to the property line would be the front wall plane of the module itself, not of the entire building in a multiple module scenario.
Could we add some clarifying language to that effect and also maybe clarifying in the diagram as well, since we're using the same U in shape in the prior diagrams with multiple module?
It's just, it's, I've read it like three times now. It's still, I get it one time and then it's confusing the second time, so.
Yeah, I think the text is still confusing as well, but.
Just to clarify, the text of number four?
Yes. The second sentence? Trying to identify that a module That is located. Any applicable module elevation located more than 30 feet behind. The portion of the wall plane closest to the property line is not included in the calculation of average grade. That was creating some confusion that if there's a module located more than 30 feet. Behind the property line. That. It is not. Included in the height method.
It's not 30 feet from the property line. It's 30 feet from the front facade. And so. These are rectangular buildings if they weren't and they had cutouts. If the module furthest from the primary street, which is measured on its own, if you do the multi-modal. If the module furthest from the street. Has cutouts. Then. If you have any cutouts that are more than 30 feet behind the front wall plane. Closest to the primary street for that module, not the other modules. Then that would not count.
Would it be helpful to have? Not to make it too complicated, but two diagrams for this item number four, one that shows for a single building method like you've got shown here, which I think is correct. Except I think where it in on the diagram where it says greater than 50%, that should be less than 50%. Um, but maybe have one diagram for full building method and another diagram for multiple module method that maybe shows that. Module B with a 30 foot deep recess in it and how that 30 foot deep recess doesn't apply.
Yeah, Brian, I think like it it seems like we're distinguishing between a module. And a wall plane in the current graphic we're looking at. We are defining that cutout as Mr. York called it, the that sort of line that's. Being dimensioned to less than 30 feet, that's still being considered a wall plane versus a module. And on the upper diagram, there are two different modules. So it seems like we're trying to differentiate. Between what's a wall plane and what's a module? And and the way that this is drawn. It looks like, you know, it's it's not clear that that's considered this the same wall plane that's more than. 30 feet behind. The northern portion. Does that make sense? Apparently not.
The the diagram that's shown on the screen now that shows. The U shaped building with two Bs along the primary street and then greater than 30 feet. If you notice. The line of the building. That's just above the greater than 50%. Is not highlighted because that's not being counted towards. Your highest and lowest elevations.
Right, but it's.
Because it's more than 30 feet away from P.
Right, but it's also being defined as a wall plane, not a module.
Well, this is a single building measurement.
Right.
Okay. So that's a single building measurement if it was. If you drew that line that's parallel to the primary street. All the way across. From line A to line C and you did it modularly. Even though that line for the rear module. Is more than 30 feet from the primary street, that entire length, if it were. Parallel to the street would be. Highlighted as that modules. Front facing facade.
Is that true even if? That module's front facing facade is. Less than 50 feet of the total building elevation or width?
My understanding and Justin jump in, if the if the module is at least 20 feet wide or if. If it's a module in and of itself, if it qualifies as a module. Then the fact that one module, I guess, is less than 50% of another module wouldn't weigh in. But I would defer to Justin on that. Yeah, David's right, because each of those calculations will be taken separately on a module by module basis. The 50%. Will come into play. So if 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 someone were building this building, this U shaped building. They would have they would. They would do an analysis essentially if they needed to to determine whether the single height method or the multiple module height method was more advantageous to them. And if they wanted to do the single height method. Only in this case, only the the red B elevations would be taken to account into account. Because the uh, the the base of the U right above where it says greater than 50% is both. More than 30 feet from uh, front facade, the red B. And it's less and it's greater than um. Uh, yeah, it should be a less than and it's less than 50% of the of the building or module elevation. If it were. The way I read it, um, if it were greater than 50%, the way the text is written, even if it were. More than 30 feet from line B, it would be taken into account. If someone were to do, if they were to find it. Better to break this up into modules. That entire, like David said, you could you could do that entire line from. Uh, from A to C, that dashed gray line. And cut that off as a module. And the grade that will be taken into account for that module would be along that gray line. I hope I'm explaining this. It's really, it is technical. Complex stuff. I hope that makes sense.
So is this section four only supposed to apply to the um? Single building height method?
This would be for either a single building or modules, uh, so it could use in either case.
That's what I was going to suggest is maybe for clarity to separate. Method one, mod, you know, you're you're going to cut modules. Here's what you do. Method two, building is going to be single. Here's what you need to do for the great changes and stories.
We could we could do that. We could break number four up into. Single height applicable elevations and multiple height applicable elevations. They would say mostly the same thing, but it it might clarify.
The two diagrams.
If you're if you're going to go through the effort of that as well, I'm I'm wondering if it might be helpful for us to see a couple real world examples. Because a lot of the conversation about topo is assuming a consistent slope. And sites have things like swales, depressions, kilox. I mean, so this is um. I'd I like to see how it gels out in a real building and that that might that might help me review the text a little bit.
Similar thought. Mr. Fox.
Another suggestion and maybe overkill, but it says closest to the property line. Next to the, should we add next to the primary street? Is that just kind of understood the way it's way through? It's wise to look at this without actually having been through an application. I would potentially look at, you know, property lines all around the entire site, but. Just throwing that out there.
Specifically, as I'm taking notes, what do you want to add there?
Um, where I think where it says, uh, the portion of the wall plane closest to the property line shall not be included. Suggest property line. Along the primary street. If that's where it's supposed to be applicable.
Gotcha.
Would it would it? Could you just replace the words property line with primary street or am I?
Yeah, that that would read consistent with the first part of that section. Strike property line and replace it with primary street.
So for this section four. My comments are on the diagram change to greater than 50% to less than 50%. Break the text into two or the sentence, the second sentence into two sentences. One for single method building height and one for multiple method building height. Um, and then change the graphic into two graphics, one for single method and one for multiple methods. Change the word property line to primary street as highlighted there. And then also add some real world. Topography examples. In the graphics. Any other comments on this section four?
Just to clarify, you want. Explain to me a little more about the real world example in the in the text.
I'll defer to Commissioner Fox.
Yeah, my comment, I I don't think it has to go in the actual body of the text. I just wanted to ask, um, you may have already done this, Carter. Done a couple real world tests of it, like looking at site plans that have come through. In recent months or years, um. That would be helpful to just see that as a reflection of what we're putting in the text. Does that make sense? Not to be part of the text change proper, but as an example of how it's applied.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Our deadline for action on this case is October 16th, so we would have to make these changes. Um, for next Tuesday's planning commission meeting. So I guess it would just be if we voted out today, it would just be part of a brief presentation at the full planning commission meeting next Tuesday. Is that enough time to do that?
Changing graphics, maybe not. Because we would need to get it into Board Docs like ASAP. But I'll defer to Justin.
Yeah, it could be challenging and for the um, for the examples, Commissioner Fox. Um. I don't know that we'll be able to provide site plans because this this is a new concept that hasn't been. Available for use yet. So I'm I'm just struggling to, um, help me understand what what would be helpful for us to show you.
So my comment is more you have site plans that show real world examples of buildings and sites. Apply this text change to it, not show me an example of somebody who has used this text change because that's that's ridiculous. So so take a building that you could conceivably break into modules and show an example of it working. Because I think we're going to be hard pressed to find a hard U on a perfectly square site where everything is a consistent grade. Right? Which is the example that we're showing. And and my only sense in doing that is um. I I I think it will be challenging to get the full commission to understand. This text change at one meeting without an example that walks through. What the implications are of it. This is a building. This is what happens on this site when you do it in a regular standard format. This is what happens when you use multiple module. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Just a side note, I'm. Very happy that this text change is potentially occurring because it. Better for the city and then. Complex, some of the site planning. Has to be with complex uh, grade changes on the site. I think that's benefit. For breaking down the massing. Forward to passing.
Thank you both. I think those were all of the comments that I have from last time. Any other? Looks like the the other ones that I had provide a new graphic. For section three about what if there's more than one primary street, I see the new graphic there. Any other comments or questions from commissioners other than these items? Okay, well, um, and if I can't see it, just go for it and unmute and start talking. Um, well, given that and given that this, um, with the current deadline needs to be voted out. Um, the changes would need to be submitted to Board Docs. Within, you know, 24 to 36 hours. Um, is that something the staff thinks they can do or do you think we should request some additional time on this text change?
So I um. Actually closer to 12 hours, so um. Uh, if. I I would say this, if you. Would prefer, if you're not okay, oftentimes it's our practice to. Insert diagrams and graphics um. After text change is even adopted by council. So oftentimes council doesn't even see diagrams for text changes. However, if you're not okay moving this along without the changes to the diagrams that you've requested, then I think. Then I think we need to ask for an extension to give us some time to fix those and bring them back and show them to you again.
Understood. What is the will of the commission? Would you prefer to hold this and see the diagram for the practitioners in the field, so I defer to you? Yes, you'd like to hold it, both hands? Um, comfortable voting it out without the new diagram? Commissioner Haver?
Can't see anything. I just have a white screen here, so.
So personally, I think the like the text itself is fine. I really think it is just the diagrams that need correction. So I think from that standpoint, I would be okay voting it out. That's just me.
I'm okay voting it out also. Just with the assumption of making those changes.
Commissioner Haver, your thoughts?
I I I'm I'm feeling not so sharp today because I'm still confused. But if I've got all these other smart people on the on the call. Then understand what's going on. I'm I'm comfortable getting behind them.
Um, it sounds like the only changes to the text that we have are. Uh, the one section that Mr. York pointed out about um. In the beginning about removing the in feet and in stories. And then in the second, um, the B two graphic, I think changing it back to the original. Graphic from the prior meeting. And then in the number four graphic, breaking the second sentence into two explanations. One that describes the single height method and um, one that describes the multiple module height method. So that would be the only text change. And that is not a diagram change. Um, well, I guess I think we are. There sounds like there's a majority that is okay with voting that out. Would you like to make a case, Commissioner Rains strongly in in another direction?
No, no, I'm good with the tax change.
Okay.
diagrams.
Okay, great. Well, based on um, making those changes and with additional. Diagram updates um. Before it gets to council, um, I do have to make a motion to vote it out. With the recommended, I'd like to move to vote. Make a motion. To move text change 2220 um, out to the full. out to the full planning commission with a recommendation of approval. Is there a second? Commissioner Fox has seconded it. All those in favor, raise your hand. The vote is unanimous. We are now moving that out. Alright. Moving on. To item or text change TC 621 tiny houses. This text change amends the UDO to facilitate the construction of tiny houses or small residential structures used for single unit living. I would ask Keyan McDonald for a staff's presentation on TC 621. On September 21st, the committee had an overview presentation and discussion on this text change.
Alright, thank you very much. Give me one moment as I pull up the presentation for you all. So this item appeared before the committee last a few weeks ago on the 21st of September. And so I've just prepared a relatively brief presentation to go over the revisions that were made since you last saw the draft ordinance and also some additional information for your consideration and clarification, particularly some additional design standards that were researched by staff within the UDC that could be applied to manufactured homes as that is permissible. And seemed to be something that the committee wanted to investigate further. And so we've looked at a few other standards for your consideration. So first, the revisions that we've made since you last saw the text and none of these are really super substantial, but do address, I think, the concerns that came up at the last meeting. So first is related to building height for tiny houses. We had originally proposed measuring building height from finished floor as a means to ease the administration of regulations for tiny houses, also make them easier to construct so that grades were not needed to, to be located on the site and produced on a plan for measuring height. However, we did hear some concerns from the committee and we're, and think those were well founded about artificially elevated structures. And how measuring from finished floor could result in structures, even though small, could be visually impactful depending on how creative someone might get. And so instead we've revised that particular provision to measure from finished grade, which is how buildings are measured generally, assuming they're not subject to infill. And given that we're proposing a maximum building height of 26 feet, we think measuring from finished grade is suitable for this particular structure and still will ease the requirements a little bit. And they are also exempted from infill, meaning pre-development grade does not have to be taken into account, which again makes things a little bit easier for those looking to construct. The second standard we changed was related to the design standards for manufactured homes qualifying as tiny houses or ADUs. There is, there was a requirement about minimum roof pitch for the predominant or for the, a, a single predominant roof line. And instead we've changed that language such that it just applies to the predominant roof line. We wanted to make it clear that if you were to have multiple roof lines, that you were not necessarily off the hook for providing that minimum roof slope. And so we think how the text has changed does accomplish that. Third, this was also related to one of the design standards. There was some concern that including the terms artificial or manmade was somewhat superfluous, such as almost anything could be classified as artificial, excuse me, I should say. I should say natural or manmade, apologize. Natural or manmade, almost any material could be classified as natural or manmade. And so we removed that and just included the provision that the material not be of a reflective nature. I will note we've come back and in the later slides, I'll show some more explicit language that could be included there in the allowable exterior cladding materials list. The last few revisions, we did include a cross-reference to 1171D, which is specifically cites standards for the setup and installation of manufactured homes. And we've included a cross-reference to the specific code that's looked at under or that's applied under state law. And we think that's a little bit more durable and also clear than having a, a separate sort of general statement that they need to be installed properly. And so we, instead of including that as a design standard, we updated 1171D with that correct cross-reference, which we think gets us where we need to be. And we were able to get confirmation on that specific change with our, our building folks and also Stormwater. And last, this is again, really just a clarification that tiny houses must adhere to the same accessory structure regulations as detached and attached houses. Previously, there was just not explicit language to make that, to make that known to a user of the code. So we've inserted the word tiny house within 672, along with detached and attached houses. Such that they play by the same accessory structure rules, given they'll exist in many of the same places. So additional design standards that we are, we wanted to bring to the committee for their, for your consideration. The first relates to roof pitch. And so at present, what I have highlighted in red is the sort of added text, just for the specific standard. What's shown in white there at the, the sort of entry to this statement is what's existing today. So at present, we were proposing that the predominant roof line shall have a pitch of 512 or greater. However, there was some questions from the committee and also from UDC and looking at best practices and how there, there are definitely some creative architectural styles that are used for tiny houses that may include a flat roof structure. And so we wanted to provide that option. So essentially, the predominant roof line shall have a pitch of 512 or greater unless the roof includes a parapet wall of at least 30 inches in height, in which case it may have a pitch of 212 or less. And so this would allow for low slope or flat roof structures to be included as a manufactured home tiny house. So with the requirement that it include a, a parapet wall. And we think that parapet wall of 30 inches in height would adequately sort of screen that relatively flat roof. And so this is one option for the committee's consideration. The second is related to the exterior wall covering. So we currently have in the code that it shall be of a non-reflective nature. I will say that is somewhat subjective. There is a reflectance factor that exists for materials, but it doesn't always get you where you want to be, such that snow, for instance, is a high reflectance factor, but it's not shiny. And so it just could be a little difficult for us to administer. So instead we're proposing maybe including a list of allowed materials. And what we've done here is basically take all the materials that are permitted under the North Carolina residential code and pulled out those that we think may be undesirable, like steel and aluminum siding, horizontal aluminum siding. And there could be others on this list. I did look at them visually, however, I will admit I'm not an architect or builder. And I realized that some of these, if you, if you search them like I did, you'll find that they come in a variety of different appearances. So there may of course be some, some specific opinions about these, this list of materials. And we're more than happy to amend it if need be, but we wanted to present. This is an option because we think it is a little bit more explicit and could be clearer. I will note again, everything listed here is something you could put on a detached house today. So we're not expanding the list at all. If anything, we are contracting the allowable materials. And this is just a, a simple diagram to show that difference in roof slope. And so that 12.5 is sort of the standard. And then if you wanted to go 12.2 or lower, you would have to provide that parapet wall. And this is just to ensure that there's some sort of ornamentation and visual interest to the roof shape that more closely approximates a traditional detached house. Other design standards that were considered. One being that the primary entrance shall incorporate a porch, vertico deck or stoop of at least 20 square feet in area. As you probably are aware, because the manufactured home could be constructed offsite and then brought to the property. It might not have the same types of features, building features without that being explicitly required. And so we felt that this again would provide some visual interest, provide some sort of connection between the building and the, the outward site. And felt that this type of requirement could be, could be reasonable. The 20 square feet is fairly large, depending on, you know, exactly what you want to provide. There's many examples of very small porches, for example, or covered entries that are, that are fairly small. But this is a, I think we thought a good starting point. And then the last design standard that we looked at was just requiring some type of screening between these tiny manufactured homes that qualifies tiny homes and other nearby residential structures, be it a detached house or attached house in a residential district. And so the two screening options we proposed were either a fence meeting the requirements of 728. So that's just our general fence provisions related to fences in residential districts. Or for understory trees per 100 lineal feet. And then we just included a cross-reference there. So there's understanding about what understory trees are. So that would be, you know, one per 25 feet. I did check with our urban forestry staff and theoretically you could provide understory trees at an even closer spacing than that. But for per 100 is what's used for some of our protective yards. So we thought, again, that's a good starting point for the conversation. And because this did come up last time, I did want to discuss the manufactured home definition. And I apologize, it looks like I had the, clipped the wrong text, but essentially our city code refers you back to the definition in general statutes. And what's shown here is the general statutes definition. And so I just wanted to make that clear that we're creating some synchronicity between our UDO and the building code. And also, or excuse me, the HUD code and also state law, which we think is appropriate. Just to make it very clear that the term manufactured home in our code does not lend you any real additional privileges. Then you would be afforded under the, the general statutes definition. And so if you're curious, and I apologize, I clipped the wrong piece, but if you're curious, that definition is included at the very back of the ordinance. It's on page 20 of the ordinance, section 33, 33S is where it's defined. And we, we think including that direct reference to general statutes is helpful in this instance. So that concludes my presentation. I do have all of the same slides from last time we met and discussed this item. And so if you all like, I'm happy to jump into any specific area. And I can also make sure the draft ordinance is handy. If there's a specific section of the code you'd like to go into as well.
Thank you very much. Going back at my script, do we have any members of the public online who would like to provide any comments to this text change? Suzanne Harris has joined us. If, Ms. Harris, if you have any additional comments later on in the discussion, feel free to raise your hand virtually, if you're able to do that. And let us know. I would now like to allow for comments and questions from commissioners. Does anyone have any questions or comments? If so, please be recognized to speak. I may kick us off here. I had some initial questions. I have several questions about the manufactured home topic. But before we get into that, I wanted to ask about the square footage. Says that these can be up to 600 square feet, but that would not include the square footage of any porch. Just for my own edification. If somebody were to build an enclosed porch and turn it into like a sunroom, is that something that would count towards this square feet, square footage? At what point does it become the sort of a porch versus a sunroom versus square footage here?
Yeah, so our definition for what is considered conditions, it, it's really what's considered condition space. So we understand that some people have porches that they might classify as such, but they have glass paneling. And in that instance, we would consider it a sunroom and condition space. And then therefore that square footage counts towards gross floor area. And that's how we, and it also is held to the principal structure setbacks. And so we, we run into this pretty frequently with people who have multi-season rooms that want to classify it as one thing or another. But that's really the dividing line is whether or not it's condition space, meaning could it be easily converted to condition space? There's not a requirement that it actually have an HVAC connection per se. But as you mentioned, a sunroom could very easily be converted into what's effectively more permanent in condition space. And so we regulate it as such. And what wouldn't be, wouldn't count is a screened in porch, for example. That would still be exempt for purposes of the gross floor area calculation. And I realize that's sort of a fine line, but that's what, the line we've drawn to date with those particular types of structures.
Understood. That makes sense. I know that a lot of these tiny homes, they frequently, the porch was, it's designed for the, it's for outdoor living. So that the porch is sometimes significantly larger than the space than the conditioned space itself, but trying to figure out. And I know that we excluded that from the square footage. What was the, then there had been some debate among staff about whether to exclude it. What was the thinking from staff about the ultimate decision to exclude it?
Yeah. Yeah, so there was some thought about creating basically what would amount to a special definition of gross floor area for tiny houses. Given that it's one of the only, if not, I guess the only residential building type where we are strictly regulating gross floor area. So there's some concern about overall massing and size of the structure. And to the neighbor, there was some thought in the group that a deck or a screened porch could be considered basically living area. And so maybe there was some desire to limit that space as well. Given how small the tiny houses are and also the sort of different permutations that someone could have in terms of building features. And then also the, the real, the realistic probability of someone acquiring the land for a tiny house, building a 600 foot structure and then building a 1200 foot, square foot screened in porch just seemed unlikely to us. And so we ultimately decided to just leave the definition as is and not regulate the size of those types of, of building features. But it was considered, we just felt that it was very thorny. And, you know, again, given how small the structures are, we didn't want to further limit someone's ability to, to build a building feature where you're not barred from doing so in a detached house. And these building features still have to adhere to setbacks and, and those types of things. There, there's some permissible encroachments, but there are general limitations on how close they can be to their neighbors.
Understood. Thank you. I think two other big topics are tiny homes as ADUs and then manufactured homes as tiny homes. Before we get to those two topics, are there any other questions other than related to those two topics from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Rains?
Karen Miller, I'm going back with the square footage. I saw in the text that tiny homes had listed carport as being part of the gross attached garages and carports. So is that? So somebody had like a 10 by 20 carport enclosure, like just the roof, that would gross.
Yeah, and Commissioner Rains, you, you raised a good point. We included carports with attached garages just because we've gotten into debates about what actually is a carport with certain folks. People have gotten creative about, you know, seemingly, what are seemingly attached garages claiming their carports. And so we wanted to sort of erase that problem, that, that likelihood with this amendment to the gross floor area section. But we can certainly pull it out too, if the commission, committee thinks it's you know, too far reaching. The reason we included attached garages is similar to a sunroom. An attached garage could be could very easily just be converted to extra living space. And then suddenly, you're left with a non-conforming structure, especially if it's a, you know, standard two, one, or even two-car garage. It could be converted pretty easily and probably without much suspicion. And then suddenly, you've nearly doubled the size of your tiny house, and that sort of defeats the overall intent of the ordinance. So that's why those two items were included specifically, but we're happy and open to amending it specifically related to carports. We understand that that could create some confusion, but it was more out of an abundance of caution.
No, I appreciate the abundance of caution. I think that's a good idea. Because I can see that'd be easily converted as well. Just wondering if that's going to limit some options for actually truly enclosed space for residents. But I don't have an answer. I'm just wondering if there's a better way to clarify if it's a convertible carport or if it's truly a separate overhead shade structure cannot be converted, if that can be exempt. I agree, just to leave it in for now. But then they come up when that gets approved and will apply for carports.
I think it's a good question. But I agree with Commissioner Rains about leaving it in, especially given that tiny houses are usually 400 square feet or smaller. And in this case, we're allowing it up to 600 feet. But I'm okay with leaving it in for now as well. We'll see if it stays.
Yeah. I was just going to say, that was also part of our thinking, too, is that we're already giving them a little bit more square footage than the typical tiny house and that would accommodate potentially, you know, one-car garage. And there's not going to, there soon is, there's a text change in the works to remove parking requirements altogether. And we also don't anticipate someone looking to construct a tiny house is probably that interested in having a huge attached garage. At least it doesn't seem to be common in terms of the form of these buildings.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
Sorry to hog this topic, but on the materials, I would also include like decorative metal panels or even corrugated metal panels, as long as it's not like a aluminum siding that's in the traditional sense. But there's a lot of modern tiny homes out there that have metal associated with the exterior skin. So I would not exclude that from the list of materials that could be acceptable.
And sorry, Commissioner Rains, I was just kind of scrambling to get my finger on my keys. Could you repeat those materials? And we'd be happy to insert them.
Well, I don't want to limit it, but I, it could be like decorative metal panel or corrugated metal panel plating that's, you know, large format, but not your traditional aluminum siding. Whether there's like a distinction between that. Does that, that help clarify?
I think so. It may just require us.
If it's helpful, I can send email of similar lengths to this group afterwards. That helps.
Yeah, I think if it's a industry standard term, I think that's helpful. And I do know, for instance, like the aluminum, there was an aluminum material in that original list under the NC residential code that we struck. And I'm recognizing that what you're saying is different. So I think there's, there's an option there. If it does seem rather subjective, then we might need to clarify it further, or just make that known for consideration that we could get. It may put us in the position of having to make it an interpretation as to whether or not the material qualifies. So trying to find something that's standardized is probably for the best.
Okay.
So is this, is that a broader topic? Is this something we need to discuss and decide if we want to insert those additional material requirements or not? I mean, is that maybe the first question? Do we want to limit materials or not?
And this is only with respect to those that are also manufactured homes. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. It would only apply to those that are manufactured homes. Otherwise, you know, if it's built to the North Carolina residential code, it can be constructed or have an exterior material that's anything on that list, which is, this list is pulled from. So it's highly related. But yes, we're only able to enforce exterior plating material standards for manufactured homes.
Gotcha. Well, maybe before, it's a good segue to talking about manufactured homes in general. I know at the last meeting, we discussed that currently under the code, manufactured homes are only allowed in the special zoning districts, MH for manufactured homes, and that with this text change, manufactured homes would now be permitted by right as either primary or accessory dwelling units in all residential and mixed-use zoning districts. And that while we are in favor of obviously identifying more options for housing, and in particular, you know, the point of this is to encourage tiny houses in particular, I think we all have some concerns that allowing, creating a new manufactured home by right in all residential districts at 600 square feet is something that perhaps the residents here are not sort of expecting with this text change. I'll say from a, from a policy standpoint, too, you know, and so there's obviously the visual concern and component that we can try to address with some of these design standards. But, you know, there are other reasons why manufactured homes have been limited to other zoning, to limited special zoning districts as well, and other concerns about manufactured homes, the product type generally. You know, one big one is obviously the opportunity for predatory practices since folks own their manufactured home, but typically lease the land that it's sitting on. And then they own a depreciating asset that while technically, I guess movable under the code is not functionally movable, once it's placed, and that then, you know, that it has led to, you know, several predatory practices. And then in additional, and then in addition, you know, this is not a great, a high, as high a quality building type for long-term housing as permanent structures that we typically see and want for all folks. So that's why, you know, manufactured homes are typically pretty limited. So, you know, in addition to the design standards, there are other significant concerns. And I think Raleigh in particular has faced a significant amount of, I think we're number one in the country currently for the past year with corporations and institutional buyers buying up properties. And this would be a concern for me, that especially in areas where affordable housing might be more attractive, like in southeast Raleigh, that, you know, provide, it would really encourage more of those institutional buyers, just to sort of buy up these properties and then encourage the manufactured housing type throughout all of the zoning districts. So I, while I agree that we need to address the look of these things, I think, and try, I want to focus on how we can both encourage the tiny housing movement while avoiding some of the pitfalls of just such a sweeping change on where we allow manufactured housing generally throughout the city. I know I've talked to some of the rest of you offline about this as well, and that it's a concern for everyone to figure out how to draft this the right way. I'm curious if we have other, is that, would you mind putting down the presentation for just a moment?
Sure. Sorry, one moment.
Sure. So I'm guessing there were some head nodding. Is that a general concern throughout the other commissioners, with the other commissioners as well? So given that point, I would sort of want to get, maybe take a moment to focus on what the goal of this tiny house text change is specifically. And I thought it might be helpful to start with differentiating between tiny homes as ADUs and tiny homes as primary structures. So starting with ADUs, I was going to see if staff could help identify what this tiny home text change would allow, like how it would change the current ADUs and building types that are allowed under the current ADU section of the EDA.
Yeah, sure. So at present, it would really only change two facets of the accessory dwelling section of the code. The first is that it would make clear a tiny house could also have a ADU. So if a tiny house was as used as a principal dwelling on a lot, it could, that homeowner would be entitled to locating an ADU on their property as well. I will note the ADU regulations are restrictive. And so there's specific requirements for the size and location, et cetera. And so a tiny house principal dwelling would have to have an ADU that is smaller in square footage than the principal dwelling. So it would be two pretty small structures. As you can imagine, a lot of ADUs are about the size or even bigger than a tiny house. And so that, it's probably an unlikely kind of assemblage, depending on the location, but it would provide that option. And then really the only other change is if the manufactured home option is still being considered, it would permit the ADU on the property to be a manufactured home if it was to meet those same aesthetic design standards.
Gotcha. So the real effect would be to, when we're thinking about, well, are those two items? So it would now, it would allow an ADU to be a manufactured home, but would not change the setbacks or anything like that for required for an ADU?
No, we're not proposing changing any of the dimensional standards for that ADU section.
Gotcha. I know when we're thinking about ADUs, we're talking about a lot of the policy goal, some of the policy goals include allowing for sort of aging in place and bringing in multi-generational living, that kind of thing, and trying to look at some lower cost options for ADUs, such as, you know, the traditional type of tiny homes that perhaps are prefab constructed off-site and then brought onsite. Is that, are there those types of tiny homes that are not, that are not on a chassis, that are just, I imagine that there are, with those, but that are not on a chassis and therefore not under the definition of manufactured homes? Is there anything limiting our ability today to bring in and use some of those prefab homes that are not on a chassis?
So I think it would really have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, because these manufacturers build to a variety of different standards. What I can say is that, you know, you could have a modular structure where components are built, prefabricated and brought to the site, and then the building is assembled there. There may be even an option to have something more preassembled and prefabricated and brought to the site, but it would have to adhere to the North Carolina residential code in order to be used as a permanent dwelling. So there's a lot of tiny houses that are built to alternative codes, and those are permissible in other states. ANSI A119.5 is a common code that many tiny houses are built to, and other states have even implemented, you know, addendums to that code to bring them closer to standard building code in terms of insulation and windows and that type of thing. However, we investigated this pretty thoroughly, and there really is no option to use a tiny house as a permanent dwelling unless it is either a, unless the structure either falls under the North Carolina residential code, which is sort of standard construction, as you understand it, or a manufactured home. And so I think, to answer your question, I think people would be pretty limited. But I don't want to say with absolute certainty that a prefabricated structure couldn't technically qualify, but it would be that same high bar, the North Carolina residential code that they'd have to meet in order to use it as a permanent dwelling, in order for us to recognize it as an ADU.
Thank you. My associates just entered the room, so I will take care of that briefly and see if any other commissioners have additional thoughts on this topic.
Just feel free to speak up.
I think, I think you answered my primary question was if it's manufactured off-site, some of the examples, I mean, that people are very familiar with, they do meet residential building code. We can, I can find those, but I can just purchase those, have those shipped to the site and installed now, is what I'm hearing, if I meet residential building code. Is that correct, Keegan?
That's my understanding, and I'll let Captain interject if I'm incorrect. But that's my understanding.
No, that's right. It's, I think you can actually really good job summarizing. You have two options in North Carolina. It's the residential building code, or it's a HUD standard, which is your manufactured home. And it's also with the, like modular homes in North Carolina, the definition under state laws that it's built to in the North Carolina residential code. So you can do that today regardless of this text amendment. But yeah, I think otherwise, Keegan just did a really good job of summarizing kind of where we're at with, with respect to options.
And I, I think this was said last time, but you know, our inclusion of the manufactured home option was really our attempt to sort of thread the needle to accomplish both allowing tiny homes, but also permitting tiny homes that could be quote unquote movable. And while a manufactured home is not quite as movable as some of the tiny homes you've probably seen, which are on wheels, it is really the only option for something that's more mobile than the typical house. And so that's, that was sort of the primary motivation behind including this option at all. And in doing so, we recognize that there probably would be some aesthetic concerns that could be regulated by the UDO. We also recognize there's other, of course, concerns and/or considerations that the committee may take in, take into mind that can't necessarily be addressed by the UDO, but those are certainly valid as well.
So one other question. So one of the primary things we just talked about this is doing is allowing a tiny home as the primary with an ADU behind it. Could, as an alternate means to achieve that, could we change the text in the ADU section to not require the square footage be larger in the primary?
So are you referring to if you had a tiny house, that the ADU could be larger than the tiny house?
I guess that's what I'm asking. So could I not do that today, where I have a house that it's older and it's just particularly small, and I want to put an ADU, and it meets dimensional criteria, but the square footage of the ADU is larger than the older, smaller home that I have on a lot? Am I not allowed to do that? Or I need this text change to accomplish that?
So this text change wouldn't change that criteria for tiny houses or for detached houses. So there's still going to be a requirement in section 263A, D1, which states the gross floor area of the accessory dwelling shall be less than the gross floor area of the total principal dwelling. And that goes back to the sort of general definition of accessory, that it's subordinate to the principal either use or structure on the site. And so that's just kind of a common element to how we view all accessory uses and structures. And the change today, the text today, wouldn't change that for tiny houses. They would just be further limited than a detached house, because they have this cap that detached houses aren't held to. So you would end up with two fairly small structures, if that's the route you wanted to go, if you wanted to have an ADU with your tiny house. So, you would end up with two fairly small structures if that's the route you wanted to go, if you wanted to have an ADU with your tiny house.
Okay. I don't, I'm, I'm hard pressed to find that, an example of that being a likely outcome.
Agreed.
But just to, I'm going to press on this one a little bit, Keegan, humor me. So, conceivably, to meet the definition of accessory, my primary structure could be a half a square foot to a square foot larger than the accessory unit and still make the criteria be larger, right?
That, that's correct. And that's how it would work today, but most detached houses are significantly larger than the maximum square footage that's permissible for an ADU. And so, whereas there's basically two tests when it comes to size for an ADU. And if you bear with me, I'm pulling up the regulations so I can not fumble.
It's a quiz. It's, I'm sorry to put you on the side.
That's okay. It's, so essentially, what you're looking at with an ADU is that you have this one test that it has to be, the gross floor area has to be less than that of the principal structure. And again, that's because of how we sort of think about accessory uses and structures. But the second test is there's a overall gross floor area that you can exceed regardless. And so, in most instances, that's 800 square feet. For really large lots, it's a thousand square feet. And when you're dealing with the average detached house, of course, you're going to be larger than a thousand square feet to begin with. So, this doesn't really, it's not going to look sort of as strange, maybe having these two very similar sized structures on the same lot. But yeah, you could encounter that with a tiny house.
So, conceivably now with this proposal as it is, I could have my primary structure that would be limited to 600 square feet and I would have an accessory unit that would need to be 599 square feet or less.
That's right. Yeah, we're not proposing to alter, you know, the requirements any further for the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay. Okay. But that, that answers that.
Yeah. And again, I guess just thinking about the, you know, the policy that we've put forth, we did sort of struggle with how do we craft something that incentivizes that these tiny houses to a degree that's reasonable? Recognizing that for them to really be tiny, they have to, you know, the maximum floor area has to be pretty small. You know, and of course, we're always, the committee, if they choose, could, could increase that. But we felt 600 was a nice compromise considering 400 is sort of the general standard, but manufactured homes are usually larger than 400. So, 600 gets you to a reasonable point. The other thing being sort of the dimensional standards as it relates to the lots. And given that the overall lot areas and some other dimensions were already reduced with the missing middle text change, how much further do you reduce down to really make this feasible? And we think we've done that, you know, specifically for R10 and R6, we lowered the lot width and we've reduced the lot dimensions generally by about 25%. And so, we think we've made it somewhat feasible, but you're still going to encounter really high land costs in a lot of areas that would preclude, preclude this outright. Someone could afford an expensive lot, the chances of them building a tiny house are unlikely. And so, we probably see the application, it would really have to be the ideal site and maybe it would be better suited for a cottage court or something of that effect that really gets you the density you need to make it, to make it viable. But we understand there's, there's a lot sort of constraining the viability of this, this building type, but that's just, you know, the environment we live in, I think.
Thank you. Well, back on the manufactured home type. Yeah, based on my concerns and speaking with some other folks and thinking about this in depth, especially with respect to some of the predatory practices, I know we took up the manufactured home question and expansion of a former manufactured home zoning district, maybe a year or two ago before. I guess all these, I think everyone was here. And that's when we really kind of dug into debating sort of the policy of the manufactured home. But, and based on some of that, and I'm, have significant concerns about expanding that as a primary dwelling. Expanding that option, I think that we can provide some other incentives for primary structures to be tiny homes without expanding the manufactured home type to all residential mixed-use zoning districts. So, I guess my first proposal, and I'm curious the will of the rest of the commission, would be to remove the manufactured home type from being allowed as a principal dwelling for tiny homes under this tax change. Yes.
I'd be supportive of that.
Other commissioners?
I guess my, I don't know. I'm not sure how I feel about it. I think I totally agree with what you're saying. I guess my concern is it seems like that is a, like a type of, a tiny house seems like something that would lend itself to be manufactured offsite like that. So, it seems like, are we limiting, would we be limiting too much of the market by not allowing that to be? And I'll be honest, I don't know enough about tiny homes. I don't know if that's, like nationally, are 50% of all tiny homes manufactured homes? Or is it 10%? I guess my only, that would be my only concern is by not allowing it, would we be minimizing the, you know, the, the chance that this would be taken, taken off as part of, as something that people would build?
Commissioner Dotell, maybe I could add just some information that we found in our research. I will say Elizabeth Nowey from the UDC did look into and contact some manufacturers of manufactured home, tiny homes. And I think they are relatively few and far between. And the reason being that many of these manufacturers are wanting to construct to a different standard, whether it be ANSI or something else, that it is generally actually cheaper. And then they're able to basically make modifications to their construction that bring it up to a relatively high standard. You know, some of these ANSI structures, for instance, have insulation factors that are, exceed what's even required for, you know, typical residential construction. But manufactured housing is regulated very tightly and because it requires certification through the federal government, has sort of standards that are relatively impenetrable by those, you know, by, by a lot of people in the space. And so, what we found is that those producing manufactured homes as tiny homes, it's a relatively small market still. I think it is expanding and she did find that a lot of them are offering more customization options, et cetera, which makes some of these design standards feasible in the first place. But I, I think generally speaking, if you're not site building the structure, you're probably building to an alternative code. But I wouldn't say absolutely this precludes all prefabricated structures because again, modular is an option. And while that's a little different than entirely prefabricated structure, it still provides an option for a cheaper build because you're doing some of that offsite. So, I think there would still be options. It's just, it's a little difficult to say because you'd have to dig in to the construction method used by each of these producers. And I've looked at various websites and it's a little opaque as to exactly what they're building to. And some of them build to a standard that's sort of made up or, you know, artificial. But I, I think there, there are other options out there besides just the pure traditional construction method.
That's very helpful. But to summarize, it sounds like it would not preclude the majority of the tiny homes that are on the market today if we remove the manufactured home type?
I think North Carolina law effectively precludes a lot of options because you can't build to this ANSI standard, which seems to be the most common. You know, when you look at codes throughout the country, California, Nevada, et cetera, most of them are building to an alternative code that wouldn't meet North Carolina Residential Code. And that's just not an option here. And so, manufactured housing was the only kind of leftover option and it doesn't seem to be as prominent. And so, I think it would probably reduce some options, but not any, not substantially more than are already precluded by the restrictions under state law.
Understood. Well, in that case, even more in favor of removing the manufactured home type as being a permitted tiny house as a, as a primary residential or primary residence. Can we, oh, I think probably worth taking a vote on that. That's a big change. All those in favor?
So, but. But we are going to allow that standard for accessory dwelling units, just not primary units?
I don't know. Well, I guess we'll take up that topic next.
Okay.
It's going to take, yeah.
Oh, on my iPhone, I saw that Suzanne said, can I be unmuted? Question mark.
Oh. Yes. Oh, so her first question was what, so no modular at all? I believe the answer is under the general statutes, a modular home is already permitted. And under the existing UDO, a modular home would be, is already permitted because it's built to our residential building code.
That's correct.
I actually was, I meant to type manufactured and I was trying to get it in there quick. Sorry. So, yeah, I think Brian was actually asking the question that I was trying to get unmuted to ask. So, just trying to get clarification on, on what it is that you're looking to vote to say no to, just trying to understand the, I think I understand what was being discussed as far as what is and is not allowed based on the North Carolina code. But I guess I'm just trying to understand, like, so for example, you know, the TV shows that we all see with tiny houses where they're, you know, on a trailer type of setup. I mean, that I would think largely is not going to meet the North Carolina Residential Building Code. Is that fair enough or correct, you think, Justin?
I'm, I'm happy to answer. Yeah, Suzanne, your assumption is generally correct.
So, then what you're discussing or what you're suggesting, Blaney, is then to not allow any type of manufactured home as a primary dwelling unit, unless it's in a designated zoning district that already allows for it, but that kind of taking out of the ordinance, the by right part of what was in there. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. And the question about whether to allow them as ADUs is a separate discussion topic that I think we'll move to next. I think they're, they're different policy questions.
Okay, thank you.
But, but this is, but we're including manufactured and modular because in the staff overview, they define them differently as movable tiny houses.
So, modular today and site, you know, traditional site built are one in the same under North Carolina law. So, the only extra option that was being considered by this ordinance would be manufactured homes.
So, if it is a stick built on a, or not stick, but if it's on a foundation, it would be either site-built or modular, correct?
Yes, if it meant, if it met North Carolina Residential Code, then you are correct. And whether or not it's site-built or modular would still be permitted with or without this change because that's how we evaluate all of our residential structures.
Okay.
So, if it meets, if it meets the, if it meets our code, a portion of the tiny home can be built offsite, can be manufactured offsite and assembled onsite. We're trying to avoid building a tiny home offsite and rolling it up on a trailer.
Yes. I mean, I think generally that distinction is correct. I wouldn't want to preclude all types of prefabrication because to what level you could prefabricate something and meet North Carolina Residential Code, I think is a tough question, but I think generally your, your thought process there is correct.
Got it. Thank you.
I don't know if this is said, but, oh, sorry. I just thought maybe I could help a little bit too with that. The, the, the rule is from Department of Insurance and is that anything that is not built to either HUD standards or the North Carolina Residential Code, whether it be prefab, built onsite or whatnot, anything that's not built to those two codes cannot be used for permanent dwelling units and the trigger is 180 days. So, you might see something like an RV built to ANSI standards that's used for temporary purposes, recreational purposes. But the issue is when you, you've installed as a permanent dwelling unit.
And just to recap, you know, we did consider and think about creating options for temporary dwellings, but we felt the charge of this text change was really centered around permanent housing options. And so, that's why we only considered the manufactured home, you know, definition or classification, along with, of course, the North Carolina Residential Code option as it relates to tiny houses because we were just thinking about permanent housing options and feel that anything related to temporary dwellings, transitional housing, et cetera, is better suited for a, a separate text change.
Understood. Thank you. So, given that clarification, I'd like to take a poll of the commissioners. All those in favor of removing the manufactured housing type for primary dwelling units as, under this tiny home tax change? Raise your hand. Okay. Like that's unanimous? Then moving on to the next topic of manufactured homes as ADUs. You know, some of the concerns related to manufactured homes is that individuals own the manufactured home, but they lease the land that it's sitting on. With the case with ADUs, since an ADU cannot be condoed, it has to be all part of one unit, that, that policy issue does not, like, would no longer exist. And I'm trying to think of a loophole to that, but I don't think I can think of one. Does staff agree with that? That there'd be no way for someone, if, if a manufactured home is an ADU, there's no way that that could be owned separately, that the building could be owned separately from the land?
The ownership of the ADU cannot be transferred from its principal dwelling unit and it would seem unlikely then, unless there's some legal tool I'm unaware of to sort of separate the principal dwelling, which is connected to the ADU from the, the land.
Understood. But I think that that policy issue is gone and so the other two policy questions, they, they continue to remain. One would be obviously the appearance, which perhaps we can look at some of the building, an appearance requirement that, that we have listed and perhaps making that more robust. And, but the second policy issue that probably we cannot address with that mechanism is just a policy about the quality of building type, permanent dwelling structures and the, and the code that we want those built to generally when they are permanent structures. So.
Before we leave the, the topic of ownership, I believe the manufactured housing, this is Eric Hodgson Planning, by the way, is, is essentially a vehicle. So, someone could park a vehicle they own on someone else's property. I don't know that our code requires the ownership of the structure to be the same as the person who owns the land. Catherine may want to weigh in on that, but.
I was only, I was only thinking if we permitted it as an ADU, if it's an ADU, then it would be, our requirement, we require that it be affixed to a permanent foundation, I believe.
Correct, but it could still be taken off and it could still be owned by someone else and rest there, I believe. There's some other arrangement between the two parties. I don't think the structure has to be owned. I don't think the structure has to be owned under our proposal by the landowner, but I'll, I'll defer to the attorney's office.
But I think that the ADU cannot be conveyed separately from the principal.
The land cannot. I don't know about the structure that sits upon it.
Yeah, I think, I think that the key question is the land because the code is clear about the ADU and principal dwelling needing to be, that ownership, basically it states exactly, ownership of ADU should not be transferred apart from its principal dwelling unit. I think what Eric may be getting at is the land and how that could be theoretically separated, but it would seem difficult to do so if the principal site built structure, which is permanent and even a manufactured home ADU must always move together. But perhaps the, yeah, the attorney's office could weigh in.
Yeah, and maybe it, the one thing I'd say is that it's not, I don't, the manufactured home, once you get it onsite and installed, it's not considered a vehicle. The, the, actually the, the issue with the RVs that are built to the ANSI standards that they are considered a vehicle under North Carolina, the, that's the building code view. So I don't know that that actually, I don't know that would be treated any different once it gets onsite and is installed from an ownership perspective. I don't know if Davis Dawn has something to say different than that, but I don't know that that would matter, the fact that it came in on, on wheels.
Can I ask a quick question? This is Suzanne Harris. So I guess I'm kind of curious what, and I don't know the specific council direction or their, maybe their intent, but it seemed to me that a lot of what I've read and heard about the tiny house movement and things like that, is that the, you know, the individuals own their unit and, and part of that is to have a, a low cost home and to have some degree of flexibility. And then of course, people who, who own a piece of property with a principal dwelling unit may have space to allow for someone to place their unit on their property and meet all the necessary setbacks. And then of course, they would have to meet any additional aesthetic type of requirements of underpinning and those types of things, landscaping, whatever. But I guess I'm curious, I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight on it, but I'm just curious what the concern so much is as to whether or not that tiny house is owned by the owner of the principal dwelling unit versus someone who has an arrangement with the land, the property owner to be able to put their tiny house on the property, assuming it meets all of the requirements that would be set forth in, in the tiny house ordinance. Because I think if you're trying to say only the principal landowner, principal homeowner can build the tiny house, I think you're really going to limit this as an option because I think in many cases, like a, a principal homeowner isn't necessarily looking to build an additional dwelling on their property. I mean, they may be, but there's also, I would think, a market there for individuals who want to own their own tiny house and then find a place where they can place it and, and live in it legally.
I think, I'll let others jump in because I know there were people on this call more involved with the original drafting of the ADU regulations than me. But I think there's a few concerns related to first sort of permanence of the ADU as, you know, a, a more permanent dwelling and we're understanding that manufactured homes would obviously introduce the option to, to move it more readily than a, a traditional site built structure. I think there was also some concern about maintenance and ownership disputes. And while those are civil matters, if you have two different owners on a common property, it would also involve, you know, some further agreements and related to the entirety of the property. Because if it's, if you have just a structure that's owned by someone and the entirety of the property is owned by someone else, that could obviously introduce some, some conflict depending on how an ADU owner or occupant wants to use their home and the, the space around it. And so I think it was meant to sort of create unity in terms of how both structures are, are effectively managed and maintained.
The two things that were discussed, this is David York, sorry, with the ADU tech change. The two provisions that we're dealing with are subsection two, this is section two six three D, sub, excuse me, subsection one B, that the ADU shall be fixed to or constructed on a permanent foundation and not be a manufactured home or a movable structure. And so even if, even if, for example, these tiny homes on wheels, which are currently being built to ANSI, you know, RV standards, but not a permanent home standard, just even assuming that they were built to permanent home standards, they would not be permitted as a, as an ADU under our current code. And because that was the basis, that the ADU is going to be a permanent structure on the property with the primary residence, we added that language. The four, ownership of the ADU should not be transferred apart from its principal dwelling unit because we didn't want to get into condominium of residential lot, you know, a neighborhood with 50 lots that had 50 condominiums and 100 homeowners. And so that was the intent behind adding provision four, subsection four, was everything had to be permanent. You couldn't have a mobile or a manufactured home, you couldn't have a tiny home on wheels. And you couldn't have a tiny home that was movable. Even if it was, I think if it was built to housing standards, you know, the state building code for a single family dwelling, yeah, single family dwellings are taken off their foundation and, and moved periodically now. So, but that's how you would move it.
Sorry to interrupt for just a moment. I know we're about to lose at least one of the commissioners and then I'm going to have to jump off too. While I have everyone here, because I've been bugging all you guys about certain dates, I know given our agenda, we have to schedule, we need to look at scheduling a special meeting once a month. Is staff ready to try and perhaps do that at some point in November? Or is everyone available to look at that right now? Or is staff ready to try and schedule that right now or do you want to wait until the next meeting?
I think it would probably be best, we've discussed some of the other dates. I don't think we've received full confirmation on the November date, although I think generally we're going to try and target the first week in each month and so the, the first Wednesday of the month, I should say, because that gives us adequate time between the regular meeting to make revisions. For instance, if an item comes back. And so what we've charted out for the later months is that a special meeting would take place the first Wednesday of the month. And that gives us, again, spacing and doesn't conflict with some of the other standing meetings that we have, if the committee's open to that. And of course, we can be flexible as well, but that's sort of our, our target.
Gotcha. Do we need to confirm that today or can we do that at the next meeting?
We could do it at the next meeting because that would still have time. Yeah, but if, if the other staff members are wanting to, or if the committee's wanting to, we can also consider it now.
Sure. Is the goal November 3rd? Wednesday, November 3rd? I think generally, one of you, perhaps Commissioner Rain, said that Wednesday afternoons are not good. If that's the case, is that, is that the case? That, that Wednesday afternoons are not good?
Yes, the Wednesday afternoons are not good.
Okay. So we could potentially find another time. I'm not, I, I think we just have to reevaluate then, given all of the various schedules.
Okay. And I'm still waiting on a couple blackout dates from some of the commissioners. If you could send those to me through, through April 1st, what your blackout dates are, I would very much appreciate that. And you know, Keegan would appreciate that from me as well. So I might ping you again about that. This, this text change on tiny houses, the deadline for action, I believe is November 20th. So we can hold this actually for, for two regularly scheduled tech changes and one special tech change that we're likely to schedule before it hits our deadline for action. Hopefully we can get it resolved before then, but at least we can push it to our next tech exchange meeting on Tuesday, the 19th. And it sounds like we've already made some substantial changes with removing manufactured homes as primary dwelling units. And so I am interested to see that revision and then also the changes on, on how that would impact sort of what is permitted as a principal dwelling unit and how the tech change really makes an impact there. So I know that some of the other commissioners also have additional questions related to site dimensions and the number of units per lot. So perhaps we can address that at our next meeting as well. Any other questions right now before we adjourn?
I, I have a, a small list, but I'm not going to get into them now if we have others. I'm just letting you know that there's probably some additional discussion and back and forth that's necessary.
Sure. Absolutely. Anything that would be helpful for staff to know before the next meeting?
Yeah, if you could share that list with staff, that would be great if you could send them, you know, forward it.
Yeah, it's, it's more about, it's more about getting my questions answered before I make any recommendations. So if that's what you need, we could do that, but so.
And yes, go free to share that with each of us, but not all of us because that would violate open meetings you share with all of us. But if you'd like to share with each of us, I'm curious to see those as well. Anyone else?
Sorry, I just wanted to address one question that was in the chat, if that's okay. I think it should just take a moment. It was from Suzanne Harris about, you know, if this was kept for ADU, if manufactured homes were still an option for ADUs, if that's left in. I will note, we've proposed amending the section of the ADU regulations, which state that it has to be affixed to a permanent foundation and cannot be a manufactured home or movable structure. So there would be a carve out in that specific section related to this manufactured home option, if, if that's what the committee moves forward with. So just to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, and the other implications of what would be permitted and have the, for principal dwellings and the, the new implications of that policy change, I'm curious to flesh those out as well. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, everybody, and I look forward to seeing you next Tuesday at our regular meeting of the full planning commission. Thanks, everyone.